All right, let's move to our 9:10 timed item. It's a COVID-19 update. We'll start with an update from Dr. Sisson. So, good morning, Dr. Sisson. Thank you so much for joining us this morning for the special meeting night. I appreciate your time.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. This morning, I will update your board on actions at the state level that have local impacts, case numbers and rates, hospitalizations, deaths, as well as outbreaks in our long-term care facilities. I'd like to start by describing my recent advocacy efforts to the state. On Wednesday of last week, I wrote a letter to the California Department of Public Health asking that they consider revising the July 13 state public health officer order regarding business rollbacks. The current order requires certain businesses and counties on the state's monitoring list to close indoor operations until further notice. I propose that the order be revised to allow affected businesses to resume indoor operations once a county has been off the monitoring list for two weeks. This would be consistent with recent state guidance for reopening of schools for in-person instruction after a county is removed from the monitoring list. As currently written, the order does not incentivize the business community to support getting off the monitoring list because getting off the list is not linked to lifting of restrictions. From what I understand, CDPH is considering the request. One week ago, Placer County Public Health released the state-defined school waiver application for elementary schools. To date, public health has received seven applications from private schools. Public health is advising each school as they seek to satisfy the state-identified requirements. Moreover, public health and school superintendents have formed a work group to create a collaborative plan to ensure rapidly available test results for both ill students and staff. Our first meeting was yesterday, and we're meeting again this afternoon. On August 7, the state released guidance for institutions of higher education. While the state does not allow indoor lectures in counties on the monitoring list, indoor labs and studio arts are allowed if substantial physical distancing is possible. Let me say a few more words about the state's monitoring list. Placer County has remained on the monitoring list since July 9. The state recently froze the monitoring list for more than a week due to electronic laboratory reporting issues. Yesterday, however, the state felt confident enough in its data to unfreeze the list. This morning, CDPH shared with me that our indicators have fallen below state thresholds for three consecutive days. This means that Placer County will be removed from the monitoring list tomorrow. Yes, you heard that right, we're coming off the monitoring list. If Placer County remains off the monitoring list for 14 days, all K through 12 schools may choose to reopen for in-person instruction under the modifications outlined in state guidance without needing a waiver from the local health officer. As I mentioned earlier, due to the way that the state order is currently written, businesses like hair salons and places of worship will not be permitted to resume indoor operations following the county's removal from the list. I will continue to advocate to CDPH to link removal from the monitoring list to reopening of businesses. Let's turn our attention to Placer's specific data, beginning with hospitalizations. Hospitalizations have held relatively stable over the last two weeks. We currently have 64 confirmed COVID-19 cases in Placer County's three hospitals, 95% of whom are hospitalized because of COVID-19. At the request of this board, Placer hospitals are now reporting the number of new COVID admissions in the previous 24-hour period daily to public health. Yesterday, there were nine new COVID-19 admissions, down from a high of 18 on August 3. There are currently 15 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the intensive care unit, 87% of whom are there because of COVID-19. Bed availability in Placer's three hospitals remains low. There are only eight total adult beds available, with only six available in the ICU. Two hospitals have surged their regular adult beds, expanding capacity as needed to meet demand. There are now 2,625 laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Placer County. 28 Placer County residents have died of COVID-19, including eight in the last week alone. Deaths are a lagging indicator, and while case rates and hospitalizations may have peaked, we predict deaths that we predict that deaths will continue to climb. All of the deceased so far had underlying conditions, with many of them residing in long-term care facilities. Cases in long-term care facilities continue to rise. Currently, seven skilled nursing facilities are reporting one to 24 cases each in staff and residents, including 15 new cases in the past week. In addition, six other long-term care facilities report one to 11 cases each, including six new cases in the past week. Public health is conducting extensive testing and surveillance in these facilities and has engaged the California Department of Public Health to provide ongoing technical assistance to skilled nursing facilities in particular. However, the best way to protect vulnerable residents in long-term care facilities is to keep the case rate low in the general community, since that is where long-term care facility employees come from and return to every day. Placer County Public Health has received nearly 47,000 initial test results to detect COVID-19 infection. This indicates that over 10% of the county's population has been tested for COVID-19 to date. Locally, we measure the seven-day average testing positivity rate at 9%. Placer County Public Health has been working with the California Department of Public Health to understand why our local calculations differ from the state's, so that we can better understand and predict our placement both on and off of the monitoring list. We've learned that the state currently has our positivity rate below the 8% threshold at 5.2%. This is likely because the state does not deduplicate results when calculating positivity rate, or as Placer County does. We have requested that the state share their detailed methodology with us, so that we can replicate their approach in our own reporting. We'll be shifting to the state's method on our daily dashboard, and will likely also shift to reporting case rate by episode date rather than by date of specimen collection, a distinction that I discussed at our last meeting. We expect to implement those changes later this week. I have good news to report on the testing front. Testing turnaround times for lab results have improved. The state's testing contractor, OptumServe, which uses Quest as its laboratory, is reporting decreases to two 4.6 days from seven days previously. One large health system has decreased to three days from four to seven days for outpatient testing. The two Optum Serve sites in Rockland and the Tahoe region are still open. Both are operating at or near capacity, and the number of no-shows has decreased in the last week. Wait times for appointments have also improved from the seven-day wait I previously reported to your board. Appointments are now available within one to two days at each of the Placer locations. Placer County is following state testing prioritization guidelines and continues to recommend testing only for people with symptoms or who are close contacts of cases, part of an outbreak investigation, or who live or work in a high-risk setting. In summary, COVID-19 continues to circulate throughout the Placer community and sadly has resulted in more deaths. While we're only a little over halfway through August, it has already been the deadliest month to date for COVID-19, with 11 deaths recorded so far. Our forthcoming removal from the monitoring list is a great sign, and if we remain off the list for 14 days, this will allow schools to reopen in person. I urge our community to continue to exercise healthy habits so that we can stay off this list and allow our schools, and hopefully also some of our businesses, to move forward with reopening. To slow the spread of COVID-19 and prevent further disease and death, we continue to recommend the following health precautions. Avoid gathering with non-household members. Stay six feet apart from people you don't live with. Wear a face covering in public. And stay home if you're sick or you've been exposed to somebody with COVID-19. Thank you for your time and attention this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Sisson. I appreciate that. I think what we'll do, unless there's any clarifying questions from our colleagues, what we'd like to do, since we have some people lined up to speak, we are going to go ahead and hear from our panelists. That way, we've got folks who are calling in, and they've got tight schedules and patients to take care of, et cetera. So what I've asked is that Shanti Landon, who works for Supervisor Weigant, has been able to reach out to a couple of folks, experts in their field, so we're going to hear from them. We also have a couple of speakers from some local hospitals and a local university. So Shanti is going to introduce our speakers, and then we'll hear from each of those, we'll hear from each panelist. If you have some clarifying questions of that panelist, we can go ahead and take those comments or questions at that time. That way, if any of the panelists have to drop off the call for work, we have an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions. We'll finish up with our panelists, and then we can go ahead and open it up to comments or questions from the public. All right, so Shanti, if you will introduce our first panelist, please.
Sure, great, thanks. First, I just want to say thank you to the panelists. We have a couple that are joining from Europe, and so we really appreciate with the time difference that they're taking the time to come speak to us today. So first up is Dr. Michael Levitt. Dr. Levitt is a professor of structural biology at Stanford University. He's also a Nobel laureate, receiving the Nobel Prize in Chemistry in 2013. Since January 2020, Dr. Levitt, his Stanford group, and an international team of volunteers have worked tirelessly on data analysis of COVID-19. Dr. Levitt has been published numerous times in the National Institutes of Health and National Library of Medicine. He is well-versed and researched on COVID-19 and its behaviors. He received his PhD from Cambridge University, and we are truly thankful for the time he's taking today to provide his input here at the board. Welcome, Dr. Levitt.
Hello. I think my camera is muted. I'm not sure how I am... Okay, I cannot read, sorry. Great, so you see me against a San Francisco background, basically because I'm in a bedroom, and I thought that was more appropriate. So basically, first I wanted to say that I'm appearing here principally because of Shanti and also Julie Postenett, who's another speaker. I actually wasn't sure what Placer County was, but when I found out, I was actually even more happy because I'm an avid hiker and skier, and I'm sure I've been there many, many times. I was also impressed today, looking at the internet, to see that things are very, very well organized in terms of your net presence, and I think this is all a good sign. So basically, I have been looking at COVID for a very long term, but I should say, as has been said about me numerous times, I'm not an epidemiologist. I don't have an M.D. I do work at Stanford Medical School, and I've been there for a long time, and I am well-versed in looking at data. So essentially, my approach has been to look at the data without any prejudice and try to see what it tells us. And I think Placer County, like many other places in the United States, are at a difficult junction now because there's basically a choice between... So I think we can probably all agree that the right thing is something that minimizes total suffering, total loss of life, and so on. I mean, that's probably the criterion that we could all agree with. It's not necessary minimizing number of reported COVID cases. Keeping hospitals from collapsing is also an important criterion, but I think if we had to choose between saving lives in seven hospitals, we'd probably went towards saving lives. Difficulty is, is that it's actually easier to do the politically correct thing than the right thing. And unfortunately, this is a distinction for coronavirus. So let me just try to give you some idea about that. I think firstly, the virus is a respiratory virus. It's not in the same viral family as flu, but it infects people. It seems to have seasonality. Both flu and Corona are terrible diseases. I know very early on, when I was speaking about coronavirus at Stanford Medical School in early February, they said, you know, realize and realize again that flu is a terrible disease that has a massive burden of death. People who get flu often suffer for many years afterwards. So I think that's an important point of departure. The trouble is, is that the politically correct measures we take to deal with COVID that involve lockdown, closing of schools, they would be great if they didn't have any price. So if everybody was homeschooled, if we had been using Zoom for the last 15 years and nobody really felt any need to see people, if all restaurants were in delivery business and there were no stores except for Amazon, we would be fine. There would be very little impact of the lockdown. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and I know from my own experience, I've been working with a multinational team, and the biggest problem has been just the time differences. I have one team member in Shanghai, another team member in Stanford. I myself am stuck in Europe, and it's really ever hard to be awake at the same time. And not only that, if we are awake for one person, that's morning, the other person, that's evening. So there's definitely a need for the good old way of doing things. And I think the difficulty is, is that all of the measures we take have a price. You can imagine what the social cost of missing schools is, what's the economic cost of closing down businesses. These things translate into lives. When there's a recession, as there was in 2008, people died. It's not that anyone caused the death, but basically, when people are financially desperate, they take their own lives, they drink more alcohol, they smoke more, they drive more recklessly, and indirectly, we're causing death. So in some ways, it's very important to realize how to balance these two things. And I think it's a very difficult thing. It depends on, you know, a personal matter. You can say, well, gee, we know that there's going to be more death, but politically, we just simply have to play the game. We have to basically lockdown. We release the lockdown a bit. When the virus cases go up, we increase the lockdown, and we basically dance around the number of cases. And I think that what completely broke this model for the world was the country of Sweden. Sweden decided pretty early on, I think it was in middle of March, not to go for the lockdown game, but tried to get everybody infected. Now, it's pretty daring back then because the same people that predicted a quarter of a million deaths in the United States, I'm sorry, 2.5 million deaths in the United States, predicted 60,000 deaths in Sweden, which is a large number. It's something like more than a year of natural death. Sweden basically said that they didn't believe that, at least they acted that way. They went for saturation. They had COVID running quite rampant in their country until they got to about 6,000 deaths, something that I happened to predict very early on because we'd seen similar levels of death as a percentage of population in other countries. And basically, they're now in a situation where they have no longer any cases, but more importantly, they feel they've reached some kind of saturation. I'm not going to call this herd immunity, because herd immunity carries many, many connotations, but basically, given their population, given their age structure, given the rural... Sweden is a fairly low-density country for Europe. It's got a population density that's more like the USA, not quite as low as that, and so on, that they've reached a level where the amount of infection, coupled with natural susceptibility... It seems that coronaviruses are not new. We all get sick all the time with the coronaviruses that are basically common colds, and the body has an immunological system that basically can detect a cell that is being filled up with coronavirus of any kind and kill that cell. So basically, there are other measures. So Sweden took this approach, and much to everyone's surprise, it succeeded. Now, I've been based partially in Israel during this period, and in Israel, they had a very sharp outbreak in March. They locked down very severely. They ended up with something like 60,000 cases and about 300 reported deaths. I should say that a very important thing with COVID, which might not be politically correct, is that people can die from COVID or with COVID. And when there are comorbidities, it's very likely with COVID. Now, how can you tell this? You just simply look at the total all-cause excess deaths. Although Israel so far has had something like 500 reported COVID deaths, the excess deaths, the total number of deaths from all reasons this year is no higher than the same period was last year. So you could say that the people who died of COVID would have died otherwise, or other people would have died, or you could say that the lockdown saved as many lives as people died from COVID. The fact is, is you cannot detect COVID death. Now, if you apply the same calculation to the USA, it seems very likely that the USA is going to have a total of 170,000 excess deaths. That might sound like a very large number. It is a large number. It's unclear whether it's a factor of two, higher than the flu from 2017, 18, but it's not an order of magnitude higher, and 170,000 deaths is about the same natural death as you'd get in about three weeks in the United States. In the United States, there are a little bit less than 3 million deaths a year, natural cause deaths. So basically, the Corona has caused about an extra death equivalent to about an extra month. Exactly the same thing was seen in all of Europe, where we had some very heavily hit countries like Italy, United Kingdom, and so on. Their total excess death is also very close to 170,000. This turns out to be something like 500 people dying for a million population. So in any case, one of this is just sort of background. Placer County seems to have a case-death rate of a little bit less than, a little bit more than 1%. You have almost 100 times more cases as deaths. I looked at the county, and I think the age profile might be slightly higher than the rest of California. The county seems to score very, very well on its health profile. It was in the highest percentile of countries in terms of counties in terms of their health. So now I think you need to think what to do. Now, what we felt for Israel, Israel basically had this first case, and they locked everything down and did a huge amount of damage to the economy. Basically, when I was there, restaurants are closing and not reopening, et cetera, et cetera. I guess like in the USA, there was six months of aid for people out of work, and this is now ending. In any case, there was a second wave that started about a month ago, maybe two months ago. Cases were ramping up very rapidly, and then we started to see that the deaths were lagging behind. And then came the thought that perhaps coronavirus, COVID, like influenza, is actually seasonal. That means, we all know you don't get flu in the summer. The question is just, why don't you get flu? So one explanation would be that the virus just cannot, it hates the heat, and the virus doesn't travel between people when the weather's hot. The other explanation could be that we're actually getting infected. There are plenty of flu cases, but no one is feeling sick, and as a result, we're not getting any sick people. So I think that I actually put on a Twitter about six weeks ago, saying a crazy idea, saying that perhaps COVID was actually being transmitted in the summertime but was less dangerous, and this actually gives you an opportunity because you can infect more people for much, much less death. Typically, the Israel and other countries, the death rate in the summer is something like a third or quarter of what is seen earlier on. So as a result of this, together with colleagues in Israel, Wadi Kimron and Rigovish and Ifat... Yeah, I've forgotten her name, I'm sorry. Abadi, we proposed that maybe Israel, instead of trying to fight the virus, should let the virus bring up the number of people infected to a level that we think ensured herd immunity or should think stopped in Sweden. And this turns out to be between 15 and 20% infected. So Israel, we prevented this, you know, many, many ministers, nobody agreed with us, but the fact is, is in the last month, Israel has had about 10 deaths a day, which is more than they were having at the height of their lockdown, but they're doing nothing. They have about 1,500 or 1,600 cases a day, and again, they're very happy. The hospitals have not been saturated, and my feeling is that they've decided, perhaps for political reasons, not to cause any more trouble with the people out of work, to actually go for this level of saturation. So it seems that we don't, no one has told us, you know, you guys were right, we believe you, but the numbers are certainly pointing in that direction. And I think that, you know, of course, you know, if everything I'm saying is wrong, and come 1st of November, there's a massive outbreak of coronavirus COVID in Sweden, and people start dying like flies, and there's no vaccine, then, you know, you would have to revise things. I think this is unlikely. People, again, seem to have learnt from influenza that influenza comes back, but polio, once you're vaccinated, it doesn't come back, nor does measles. And it turns out that influenza is especially devious virus. It's much smaller in terms of its information than Corona. It's about one-third the size, but even more surprisingly, instead of having a... So I worked out that coronavirus, I think it's 25 tweets in terms of characters. They're very small. I mean, viruses are very, not very complicated organisms. They have vertical information. But in the case of influenza, information's actually broken up, instead of having one paragraph, it's actually seven sentences. And this means that different virus strains can play with the sentences to mutate them. And the reason influenza comes back and can't be dealt with is that it mutates much, much more rapidly than other viruses. Perhaps if one sentence doesn't mutate and it's needed, it can borrow it from somebody else, but in some ways, influenza is a very, very devious virus, coming back the way it does. Most other viruses, I would say almost all other viruses, aren't able to mutate so quickly and outfox our immune system. So I think it's unlikely, but of course, everything is just probabilistic. It's unlikely that COVID will come back in the fall. It's also clear that countries that are now being affected by COVID in the Southern Hemisphere are actually in an interesting situation because their epidemics just keep on rolling on, but their excess death is not increasing. And it's fairly clear that people who would have been labeled as dying from flu are now being labeled as dying from influenza, are now dying from COVID. And I think it's important to realize that COVID is the first disease where we've made extensive use of virus RNA testing, polymerase chain reaction, or PCR. If we were to apply this measure to influenza season, we would find 20% of the people carry the influenza virus, and this means that 20% of the deaths in that period could be labeled as deaths from influenza, when in fact, they're deaths with influenza. If we did this, we would find that influenza deaths were way, way higher than COVID deaths in many places. So again, you know, this makes it very hard to really know what to do. So I think the decision that you face, and it's a hard one, I would say it's really good that you're helping your businesses. I think the burden is massive. I think you're going to need to help social services, help people who are, you know, be very careful about what alcohol consumption looks like, what smoking looks like. You don't need people to smoke very much to actually have a risk of dying that well exceeds that of COVID. So, you know, overall, I think it's a difficult decision. I'm not sure that it's politically feasible for Placer County to do something like was done by Sweden or was done by Israel. That might be the right thing to do, but again, I think you probably need to carry on like you're doing, but try, really realize that lockdown is killing people, and, you know, you've had 28 deaths, I don't know over what period, let's say over four weeks. When in four weeks, you would normally have, you know, 280 deaths. I think you have about 70 deaths a week, about 4,000 a year, I guess. I couldn't find this number, but I'm assuming a mortality of around 1%. So basically, you know, under those circumstances, you've had maybe 10% of the people who are dying in this period died with or from Corona, and probably the number that really died from Corona is a small fraction of that. So bear that in mind, but also bear in mind the damage that is caused by all the restrictive measures taken. We've never applied measures like this to influenza, and for good reason. These measures are costing enormously. I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Dr. Levitt. Really appreciate your comments and your insight. Very helpful. Do any of our colleagues have any clarifying questions? All right, thank you so much. We are going to move on to our next panelist. Shanti, if you'd introduce them.
Yes, up next, we have Dr. John Iannidis. Dr. Iannidis is a professor of medicine, epidemiology, and population health at Stanford University. He's one of the most cited scientists of all times in scientific literature. His current research at Stanford covers a wide agenda, including meta-research, large research... large-scale evidence, population health sciences, and predictive medicine and health. He has received numerous awards, including the European Award for Excellence in Clinical Science, and has been inducted into the Association of American Physicians and the European Academy of Cancer Sciences. He received his doctorate of science and medical degrees from University of Athens School of Medicine and his residency from Harvard University. Welcome, Dr. Ianides.
Thank you for this very kind invitation and for giving me the opportunity to share some thoughts about the current situation and how it might pertain specifically to your county. I have to say that I tried to learn about the situation in the county, looking at the dashboard and the information that is extremely well organized. And I want to congratulate you for this. I also see that you're giving serious thoughts to balancing the benefits and the harms of different interventions. Clearly, we are dealing with a major crisis with COVID-19. It's a crisis that is unprecedented, that we don't know the exact depth and breadth and consequences that it would lead to. We should be prepared for surprises. We don't know everything about this virus. I think that we're learning. I think that there is tens of thousands of scientists who are doing great work trying to compile information and evidence to guide us through the crisis. But we still don't know a lot. So I think that a cautious approach, where we try to use the best evidence and the best estimates about different features of the virus and the pandemic and the measures that we're taking, but revisiting those based on what new types of insights we get might be the best way forward. As my great colleague Michael Levitt said, this is a major crisis that the measures that we're taking can have great consequences as well. It's not just the virus. The measures that we're trying to take to stop this pandemic, to do something about saving lives can actually kill people. And the major question is, how do we save more lives? How do we optimize our chances of fighting the pandemic efficiently, minimizing loss of lives? I'm not going to use translations of lives into dollars, but every action that we do has consequences eventually on human lives. Lockdown, shutdown, shelter in place have tremendous consequences on health. They have tremendous consequences on mental health, for example. A recent study that was published a couple of weeks ago showed that if you look at suicidal ideation, 26% of our youth have thought of committing suicide in the last 30 days. I think that this is astonishing. It is more than double or triple the typical rate in this age group. Across all age groups, we see the same pattern. Essential workers, minorities are even at higher risk for this type of morbidity. If you look at anxiety and depression, about 62% have anxiety or depression among our youth. And also, the rates are very high across the entire population. So these are data that are very difficult to translate and compare against the number of deaths from COVID or with COVID, but we need to take them very seriously. Also, we need to realize that any measures, any restrictive measures that we try to take to reduce the spread of the virus, if they're severely affecting our society, our functions as human beings, eventually, they will backfire. We see tremendous increases in domestic violence. We see increases in alcohol use, in drug abuse. Unemployment, we know that eventually leads to killing people in the long term. These are not deaths that we will see necessarily today or tomorrow or next week. We will see them accumulating over months and years, and perhaps 10 years or more. There's other unpredictable consequences as well. There's the big experiment of what we have been doing to our societies, trying to contain this virus. We have never done something like that at that scale, at that intensity, at that level of enforcement, at that level of challenging our norms of living, our norms of living a life. And I think that there's no textbook that we can try to get some information on what that would mean in the future. There's no textbook that can tell us what that would mean in terms of catastrophic events. You know, people just losing their mind and leading to social unrest. We have seen a lot of social unrest. And obviously, some of that is because of some very sad reasons because we have seen a lot of inequality and injustice in our society, and people cannot tolerate this. But you have to realize that we're doing a big experiment. And every intervention that is superimposed on that ongoing experiment has a risk of a catastrophe at some point. What is at stake in terms of the virus? I think that Michael gave a very good picture of what is at stake. People are dying from COVID-19. There is no doubt about it. They're also dying with COVID-19. COVID-19 is contributing to their deaths. It's very difficult to separate these two components. But what we do know is that across different surveys in different countries, anywhere between 96% to 98% in some cases of individuals who die with COVID-19 have other comorbidities, other reasons that they could have died. Now, this doesn't mean that we should take this infection lightly. The experience that you have in Placer County, as I understand, is mostly centered on deaths that have occurred in assisted care, living in nursing homes. And this is a pattern that we have seen in many other jurisdictions. Across the country, we see about 40% to 55% of deaths happening in nursing homes. In Europe, we see rates similarly, 40% to 65%. Another 10% to 30% of deaths seem to be related to nosocomial infection, which is infections that happen or eventually people die in the hospital. And these are, again, highly vulnerable people. COVID-19 has the peculiarity of having an extremely rich epidemiology in terms of the risk gradients that it exhibits. Most diseases where we're struggling to find risk factors that would tell us who is at higher risk and who is at lower risk, eventually, we find some risk factors that may double the risk or increase it by 1.5-fold. In COVID-19, we have risk factors that modulate the risk more than 1,000-fold. If you compare the risk of death in children versus very elderly, vulnerable individuals, the difference in the risk of death is more than 1,000-fold. If you compare someone who's a frail health individual in nursing home has a 25% chance of dying if that person is infected, more or less. For a child infected, most of them, they would be asymptomatic. They would have no problem. Most young adults, most of even middle-aged adults, even most elderly people who have no health problems will not really have a problem. So this is good news in the sense that if we use that information to selectively protect that part of the population who is at higher risk, and we are successful at protecting that segment of the population, then we can do extremely well. A huge debate about COVID-19 is what is the infection fatality rate? Meaning, if you divide the number of people who died with this virus by the number of people who were infected by this virus, what would that look like? And you see some quotes that vary substantially across different counties and states and countries. And probably, this is not surprising. If you take your county, for example, as Michael mentioned, you have a case fatality rate that is about 1%. If one out of 10 infections has been detected, this means that the infection fatality rate in your county might be in the range of 0.1%. If one in five has been detected, then it might be about 0.2%. This is something that I understand that my good friend and colleague Julie Parson is trying to get at with a seroprevalence study. And it would be very interesting to see what that looks like. But the reality is that infection fatality rate is not a fixed number. It is something that is up to us to modulate and to change, and hopefully, change in the right direction. For example, if we let nursing homes unprotected, if we let burnable people unprotected, and they get massively infected, then our infection fatality rate and also the number of deaths that we will report and we will accumulate will be very high. Conversely, if we protect that small fragment of the population that is at high risk, then we can hopefully avoid the large majority of deaths. You can think of 60, 50, 60% of deaths being nursing homes and 10% to 30% being hospital-related deaths. That immediately amounts to 60% to 90% of all deaths that could potentially be averted if we use very draconian measures to protect these people. We need to balance everything. And we need to balance everything continuously because I think that the epidemiological picture might change, and we just don't know how it might change. Do we really need to have 60% to 80% of the population being infected before this pandemic goes away? This is what some initial models suggested, but to be honest, we just don't know. And I think that this is very unlikely. I think that there are some locations, probably, where you have extremely congested circumstances, like homeless shelters, where we have seen extremely high rates of infection. But in most communities, if you take into account the heterogeneity in the dispersal of the population and the heterogeneity on how people interact with each other, meet or do not meet with each other, eventually, the rate of the proportion of the population that needs to be infected is much, much lower. It could be 30% in some locations. It could be 10% in some others. It could be even less than 10% in yet some others, especially if the heterogeneity of mixing is very dramatically different across different sub-populations within the community. I cannot tell you exactly where Placer would be in that continuum, but based on the fact that you have done so well so far, I would suspect that probably you're on the end of the spectrum that has the most optimistic features. Does this mean that this will necessarily be the case downstream? I cannot promise you that. You need to keep very close eyes. And I see that you have competent supervisors in your group. And I'm sure that they will do a great job to try to track what is your capacity in terms of hospital beds and how the epidemic wave is evolving and how things fare on a weekly basis. But in principle, I think that you should dare to open your society, open your community, still be vigilant, and very carefully track what is going on, but keep some sense of optimism. I cannot promise you that there will be no new wave in the fall. I think that Michael is very optimistic. I share his optimism, but we just don't know that. We don't even know how big the new influenza wave will be this winter. Each winter is a new winter. We just don't know whether it will be an influenza that will kill 350,000 people or 700,000 people, or maybe it will be like 1957, where 1 to 4 million people died of influenza. But I think that we can have some optimism, and we can also look forward to balancing the risks versus the benefits pretty efficiently. Thank you again for inviting me.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ianides. We really appreciate you taking the time this morning. Any clarifying questions? It looks like Supervisor Wygant has a quick question for you.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Ianides. I read an article that you wrote back in the middle of March. And I think all of us were extraordinarily thirsty for information. And as both of you have just testified, we still don't know a lot. But your prediction for the death rate was, as compared to the World Health, the World Health Organization's death rate prediction was over 10 times what your article stated. And in retrospect, it just seems like there was so much sensationalizing, as there is so often today in the politics of everything. But that's a lot of the information that was coming across our table and, of course, getting into the press. So I wanted to point that out. And then I just kind of asked you, it sounds like your recommendation is that we need to focus on adaptive management and be ready to adjust to anything that might come up as we learn new information. But do you have any, what would you think would be the biggest thing that we should try to avoid or the biggest potential mistake or mistakes that the county might make if, in fact, we were free to craft our own individual policy?
Thank you for this very interesting question. So back in March, I wrote this paper in STAT, trying to say that unfortunately, we're making major decisions without having any reliable evidence. Our data were very poor. And I gave a spectrum of potential predictions that varied from anywhere from 10,000 deaths in the US up to 40, 50 million deaths globally. Because the type of information that we had back then could not really exclude any number within this vast spectrum that was 100 or morefold different. And I think that many people mistook that as if, you know, one would say, oh, it's going to be only 10,000 deaths. And obviously, that's a very wrong way to read that paper. And I can't see how anyone could read it this way when I said that we just don't know where exactly in that spectrum we might land. Based on what we know now, it seems that we're landing closer to the more optimistic end of the spectrum. And clearly, we're not going to deal with 40 to 50 million deaths, at least with the virus that we know so far. As I said, it's a virus that there's still a lot to learn about. But even under pessimistic assumptions, it's extremely unlikely that we will land anywhere close to that. In many communities, the numbers are very close or even lower than the equivalent of 10,000 deaths. In many others, they're higher, substantially higher. And this is why we need to be very, very careful. I cannot tell you to just not take measures and, you know, just forget about it, and it's just something that will go away. That would be the wrong recipe. I think that measures that are tailored to individuals that do very little harm to the economy, to the society, to the structure of our life are likely to be beneficial. I mean, we know that hand washing is beneficial. We know that masks, when worn in the right setting, they're beneficial. We know that social distancing in situations where you have an active wave, an active epidemic wave, hopefully, can curtail the number of infections. But more generalized measures, more restrictive measures, more aggressive measures, they can have a lot of harm and perhaps no benefit. I mean, for example, lockdown supposedly saves some lives, according to the Imperial College model. But actually, we looked at the two models that Imperial College used, and we cross-applied the model that they used in the US in Europe. And we saw that when you do that, you see absolutely no benefit from lockdowns. We actually saw that in many other countries that they didn't report in their Nature paper, lockdown had no benefit with any of their models. They just didn't report on that. So I would be very, very cautious with aggressive measures. I would be vigilant. I would be optimistic. I would be ready to adapt to new circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, doctor. We really appreciate your input, and we'll move on to our next panelist.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Dr. Julie Parsonet. Dr. Parsonet is a professor of medicine, infectious diseases, and population health at Stanford University and specializes in adult infectious diseases. She's had continuous funding from the National Institutes of Health for over 25 years and was chief of infectious diseases and geographic medicine at the Stanford Department of Medicine from 1998 to 2001. Dr. Parsonet graduated from Harvard and Cornell Universities, and she and her team are currently overseeing the Placer County seroprevalence study. Welcome, Dr. Parsonet.
Thank you very much. And I first want to thank all of you at the Board of Supervisors for all the work you do. It's a challenging time, and we all in the state appreciate the hard work of the public servants and everybody who works in the county trying to keep everybody safe. I particularly want to congratulate Dr. Sisson, who I have talked to several times on the phone, and I totally admire and think she's done a terrific job, as is really evidenced by you getting off the monitoring list. I think that's a great accomplishment and is a real testament to doing the right things as things currently stand. I can't really see, are my slides up? So I was asked to bring some slides, so I just want to make sure those are up.
Yes, we are bringing them up. Thank you.
Oh, by the way, my background is Antarctica, just to cool you guys down a little bit.
We really appreciate that. Thank you. We need a little cooler air in here.
And I spent six months there, and it was nice and cold. All right. So we've been asked to do a sero survey in Placer County. And I'm going to talk a little bit about serology. Can you go to the next slide, please? That's the last slide. So if we can go back to the next slide, there we go. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit. I'm just going to outline what I'm going to talk about in my few minutes here. I'm going to talk about sero surveys, why we do them and what they are. Then a very brief outline of what we've proposed for the county. Then I'm just going to mention quickly what Stanford is doing in COVID in case there are other areas that you want to collaborate with Stanford. And then some final thoughts. And I will mention that I disagree with some of what Mike and John have said as a person who comes from a more public health background. And I'm happy to raise those issues when we get to the question and answer. So next slide, please. So on the left, is a picture of So on the left, I'm just is a picture of COVID, and those little three-pointed white blobs are antibodies. And so what sero epidemiology does, what a sero survey does, is it looks for those little white blobs in the blood. So when you are exposed to COVID or when you're exposed to any new virus, your white cells, specifically your B cells, produce these proteins called antibodies that bind to the invader and help to kill it. These antibodies persist for long periods after the infection has gone. So even after you've gotten rid of the infection and your back and your nasal swabs are negative, these antibodies can persist. They can wax and wane, and they can drift off and go a little lower, but in general, they last. And if you're re-exposed, they bump up again. So their presence can be used to indicate exposure at some point in the past. It doesn't say how long ago, but it tells you that at some point, you've been exposed to this virus. So we use these by, we go out and we test people's blood and we look for them. And we do this to see in an unbiased way who in the population has been infected and what populations are at risk, so we can figure out, you know, who are the people that are likely to have the highest probability of getting infected. We use them to estimate asymptomatic, or I shouldn't say asymptomatic infection, but asymptomatic or infections that didn't come to medical attention. So people had a runny nose and didn't come to see the doctor. We use these to estimate who, what percent of the population has has had at some point been exposed and may not have been seen. So as an example, in Placer, if we find that 5% of the people has antibodies, then you can extrapolate that to the entire county and say, in the county, 20,000 people have been infected. But then again, but you know that there are only about 2,500 cases so far. So one in eight people in the county has been come to medical attention by you guys, and seven eighths of the people who have had COVID in the county have not seen anybody, and you didn't even know about them. And this gets to some of the issues that John mentioned about figuring out what the real fatality rate is of the virus. So we use them to estimate the infection fatality rate, which is the proportion of people who actually die of, who are infected who die of it. We also use antibodies to understand herd immunity, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Herd immunity is the population, the prevalence of people in the population who need to have been infected so that the the virus can't spread anymore, because the people who get infection will only bump into people who are immune and and the infection can't go any further. We also use sero surveys to find out where vaccinations might have the greatest impact. And after vaccinations start, we can see their impact on population immunity. So they're very important for understanding vaccinations. So next slide, please. So I just want to make clear that serology and sero surveys are not for individual health. There is no individual benefit to knowing your serologic status right now for COVID. And that's because there are false positive tests. That's a small problem. We don't know yet how good the protective immunity is if you're positive. So if you have positive serology, we don't know for sure that you're protected. And if you're negative, you may have been recently exposed, and it may be a false negative, and and it doesn't really help you in terms of protecting yourself. So we do sero surveys and serologic testing right now for public health purposes. We're not doing it to give people their immune passport, which is what some people have wanted, but right now, we're not ready to to be able to do. Next, please. So I'm just going to mention that there have been a lot of sero surveys. This is from a website called serotracker.com, which talks about sero surveys that have been done around the world. This is incomplete. There are many more than this, but millions and millions of people have been tested around the world. Next slide, please. I will point out that in Sweden, various surveys have been done, and they suggest around 10% sero positivity. I think in the most recent survey in Stockholm, I could be wrong about that, and I'll defer to Michael for the final numbers, but they are far away from herd immunity. And in the United States, they've also done quite a number of surveys. The numbers are there up on the left, and and the CDC has done some surveys, and we did a national survey of dialysis patients, and there are quite a number of surveys that have been done in the United States that are helping devise strategies. Next, please. So I just want to mention the few that have been done in California. There have not been that many. The one that's on the screen there is the CDC survey, where they took remdesivir from hospitals around the country, and the blue dots are done in April. The orange dots, I think, are done in May, and the light blue aqua dots are done in June. And you can see New York at the top standing way out above everybody else. And everybody, all the other places are hovering less than 5% in general, 5% to 6%, 7%. San Francisco is circled there. It was done in late April. San Francisco has done an excellent job controlling disease, and they have 1% seroprevalence. There are also three other surveys that have been done in April. One was done by John and showed a prevalence in Santa Clara County of 2.8%, Los Angeles 4.7%, and Bolinas had very, very little disease. They tested the whole city. But from these data, we've estimated the under-reporting rate. And overall, people are guessing about 1 in 10 come to attention. The estimates range widely from 1 in 8 to over 1 to 50. But I think overall, we're thinking about 1 in 10 come to medical attention, and nine tenths of infections, nobody hears about. That doesn't mean they're asymptomatic. It just means that they were not symptomatic enough to come to medical attention. Next slide, please. So when they've looked at these sero surveys, they've come up with lots of risk factors. And again, I don't want to really go into too much detail about these, except to say, you know, dialysis patient, things we already know, dialysis patients, people in assisted living, healthcare workers have higher rates. These numbers are all incredibly biased, because some of these studies were done in April, and some of them were done in June, and they're not really very accurate when you lump them all together. But just to say that there are some things that cohere with what we know about the risk factors for this disease and having underlying comorbidities as being a risk factor. These studies also demonstrate that adults are all have about similar rates. They show children and youth having lower rates. Now, we're seeing these rates going up considerably in children, so it'll be interesting to see how that changes over time. Okay, next slide, please. Can I get the next slide, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Go back one second. So I want to point out something that Michael also mentioned. The biggest predictor of infection is population density. So you can plot out population density of the states or the counties or whatever, and the the it can, the population density can explain about 70 to 80% of the amount of infection that's occurring. So when you have a ton of people living together, you're going to have a lot more infection. And that's true about congregate living facilities, jails, very high-density populations, populations where you have multi-generational families living together, and large cities. So everything is biased by density of the population. And you can just imagine, if you live in an area way out in the middle of nowhere where nobody runs into anybody else, you're just not going to get it transmitted. So these, like all infectious diseases, the density of the population is really important. So the densest populations in Placer are going to be at highest risk, and that's what we see down by Roseville area rather than South Placer, rather than the more rural areas of the county. Next slide, please. John mentioned the infection fatality rate, and I just want to mention this again. This is a slide that came out of Sweden. And I just want to point out, there are two solid lines in each of these graphs, women on the left, men on the right. There are two solid lines. Those are the infection fatality rates. And then there are two dotted lines, which represent the severe infection rate by age. And the lighter lines are people with comorbidities, and the darker lines are people who don't have any comorbidity. So and these are based on knowing, on many estimates of what, who's dying. And I will point out exactly as what you heard from Michael and John, that if you are healthy and you get COVID and you're young, you're not going to die. It's very unlikely that you will die of that disease. But when you start to have comorbidities, that dark, the lighter solid line, then you start to see the death rates go up to the point where, you know, over at age 80 with a comorbidity, at least 1 in 10 people are going to die. So that's a lot of people who are going to die in those older age groups. And then if you, but I also want to point out something that's not mentioned, which is there's a lot of really serious illness that goes on. And it's not just mortality that we're seeing. We are, our hospitals are full, but they're not dying anymore. And they're not dying because we have better treatments. I work in the hospital. I see these patients. They are dying of COVID and, or they were dying of COVID, but they're not dying much anymore, because we have steroids, and we have remdesivir, which is decreasing the mortality rate. But we are seeing a lot of young adults and and people in their 30s, 40s, 50s, high productivity years, who are quite sick. And even if they're not hospitalized, they are out of work for weeks on end. And and they're, so it's not, and that is very damaging also to your economy and to families and to households and to everything. So this is not a benign disease. Next slide, please. So in terms of stopping transmission, I wanted to just mention two things. And again, this was mentioned also by John and Mike. There's herd immunity, which we're not going to get to anytime soon without a vaccine. It's just not going to happen. And then there is what I'm going to call public health immunity. So herd immunity, again, is having a large part of the population have antibodies and not be able to get infection. But public health immunity is this concept that if we can get enough people who are have have antibodies and we do socially, social distancing and careful public health measures, we can decrease the the rates of disease and and spare the population. So next, please. So I just want to point out, this is work that was done by Trevor Bedford at University of Washington, and he's just actually put out just recently. And he points out that, look, look at someplace like Arizona. Their rates, they got up to 25% positive tests, and they have about 20%, less than 20% of antibody positivity, and yet their rates are declining. And they found that in many places around the country, that when they've gotten to about 20, 25% infection antibody levels, that they're starting to see declines in rates of infection. Next, please. And so he came up with this model, looking at what that means. So at the bottom is the herd immunity level, or actually, the percent of the population that has antibodies. So you can see going from 0 to 30%. And the left axis is the RT, or the actual reproductive rate of the virus. So what you want is that number to be less than one, and then the infection disappears. And what he found is that if you have a lot of good efforts to decrease social connectivity, you can actually, and you have some herd immunity, you can actually decrease this virus's ability to transmit in your population. So what we really want to shoot for now is not getting a full herd immunity, because it will never happen, but understanding what's going on in your community with your antibodies and trying to adjust appropriately to have the right amount of social distancing and the right amount of closing and protecting, especially high-risk populations. So this is why knowing what's going on in your population from an antibody level is very helpful. Next, next slide, please. So our current plan is to do a sero survey of 2,000 people. A lot of problem with sero surveys is getting the right people, because you want to get a random sample of your population. So we're doing it by mail, and we're hoping to to get 2,000 people. We're going to mail 20,000 people and hoping that we get 2,000 to respond, and we're getting multiple people per household. The first mailing we'll do is random. The second will be targeted to areas from which we did not get very good responses the first time around. Patients will do their own testing at home. They'll sample themselves by doing a finger stick and sending it back to us, and we will test it by a series of two tests. And we hope to finish by November, depending on all the usual things that cause delays, like contracts and IRBs and all these other things that always end up causing delays and have caused considerable delay up to now. And what will be learned, or what the high-risk areas are, what the high-risk demographics are, where to allocate education, testing, and other resources, and how you can get to this public health immunity, what kind of social distancing might need to be done to protect various areas of your population. Next slide, please. So just to mention some quickly, some other things that Stanford is doing. We have a lot of clinical trials. Some of these clinical trials are open to having new hospitals join in. So if there are clinical trialists in your county who are interested in joining in some outpatient or inpatient clinical trials, we invite you to tell them to call us. The, we are interested, Lori Nelson is doing this Google Cloud platform, which is going to be getting really detailed information about all the all the people in your population that allows you to identify risk factors and things that can be modulated. And I know she's talked to Dave DeFonte about that and about including Placer in this platform data program. We're doing a lot with diagnostic tests. We are going to be seeing a lot of new diagnostic tests coming down the line, especially rapid point-of-care in-home tests that are tons of people working on and that I think are going to be very helpful in controlling this infection as time goes on and especially as we get closer to vaccines. And then we have a lot of people like Michael and John, who have been doing modeling of these diseases and trying to get us ways to interpret what's going to happen with our interventions moving forward. So I'll end with last slide. And this is my last slide as a public health person. And I worked at CDC before coming to Stanford, and I teach about outbreaks to Stanford students, and I've done for years. And I've done a fair number of outbreak investigations in the United States and around the world. And outbreak control is always much, much more political and sociological than is biological. Biology is very easy compared to the human aspects of pandemics. And I can tell you, though, that the one constant in every successful outbreak investigation or control is consistent messaging. And you can see that in the countries that have done the best in controlling the epidemic is they've had a consistent approach across their population, and they've put out messages that everybody understands and is able to adhere to. My husband was a colonel in the Air Force with 35 years of service and had six tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. He also is an infectious disease doctor. And in his opinion, fighting a pandemic is like fighting a war. And just like in a war, you need a strong command center. You can't have every platoon getting up and saying, I want to use my strategy because my my platoon is different. You end up shooting each other, and it's chaos. And everything, everybody thinks they know what to do, so there is no strategy at all. In my opinion, the command center is the California State Health Department. And if you don't agree with what they're doing, I think you should talk to them in conferences, in private meetings, and tell them what you think is the right thing for you and how they should change their metrics and what the metrics are that apply to your county and why your county is different. They will listen to you, and they will also listen to John and to Mike and to all those other academics doing modeling and the people doing new diagnostic tests and new treatments and new vaccines, and they will respond. And they will change their messaging, and they'll change their strategy, and they will do it better. They are very aware of the economic burdens. Everybody in the public health community is, and the psychological impact, they are really aware of it, and they have no vested interest in making people miserable or poor. But their message has to be the voice that everyone hears, because if it's not heard, then the virus will divide us and conquer us, and it will win in the end. So I think you have to think very carefully about your strategy moving forward, because giving mixed messages is like giving no message. So there we are.
Thank you very much, Dr. Parsonett. We really appreciate your comments and look forward to the study as we move forward. Robert, question?
Dr. Parsonett, first of all, and probably most importantly, I really want to thank you again for your availability and your graciousness and sharing your wisdom. You've been tremendous help to me, unbelievably willing to spend time and point me in different directions. So I want to thank you for that. And then just for the public and make sure I understand clearly, we're obviously going forward with the seroprevalence testing that you're going to be managing for the county, and I'm really looking forward to those results. But if I map on, you know, my words of adaptive management, Dr. Neady said, it seems to me that the only explicitly accurate way to know our mortality rate is to also know the spread rate. And with the seroprevalence testing, we'll be able to get that with a very high degree of certainty. And so we will know the worst impact deaths of the disease here in Placer County. And we'll also know, your words, your phrases, public health immunity, which I understand as being a level of spread such that there's a higher level of community immunity that can become partly achieved, that could be partly achieved with with the vaccine, of course. And then, as we've spoken, you've talked about how we already have improved our caregiving, our treatments. So is that messaging correct? Do you agree with that, that that's the the critical component the seroprevalence testing will provide for us here in Placer County?
Yeah, I think I think you're absolutely right. I thank you very much, Dr. Wiegand and Supervisor. I I think that we will know where it is, who has it, what the case, what the infection fatality rate is, and it may help you also to just figure out how intensive your public health measures need to be and where they need to be. So I think putting that all together, it gives you just a better handle on how to manage the infection from a public health perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parsonett. Supervisor Gustafson has a quick question.
Thank you, and thanks, Dr. Parsonett, and all of our panelists.
Thank you, and thanks, Dr. Parsonette and all of our panelists. Uh, Dr. Parsonette, I'm interested in, in your final comments uh related to the state. Um, has, have you or have people at Stanford been talking to the state about uh doing such a study statewide? I mean, again-
Yes, we are talking to the state about doing it statewide. We actually are doing it in three counties right now, in uh, uh Santa Clara, Solano, and in Placer. Slightly different designs in each of those counties, but we're doing it in three counties. And the state is absolutely wants to move forward on a statewide survey. Um, and there is a, a national survey that's being done by Emory, which includes California in their uh, they have seven sites that they're looking at intensively. They're doing a national survey, but they're also ho- focusing mostly on, on California. California is one of their seven intensive sites. Um, and we work with them too, they have a very similar strategy to what we're doing by mail. Um, so I think within, certainly before, in the next few months, three months, I would say, you're going to hear a lot more uh results from CERA surveys, and there will be a state CERA survey for sure.
Uh, I appreciate hearing that, because as you mentioned, if, if we are to speak with one voice, we need to share this information. And I think part of the frustration as a local public of uh, uh policy official is the burden of trying to interpret varying messages from varying leaders and scientific experts as we develop policies, when we see on the ground real-life tragedies occurring in people's businesses and homes and, and those issues. So certainly understand that we need to have one voice, but we need that leadership to be looking at it as well as us going out on our own to try to develop it. So, anyway, thank you.
I totally agree.
Thank you again, Dr. Parsonette. All right, we'll move to our next panelist, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Phil Magnus is up next. He is a senior research fellow at the American Institute for Economic Research. He received his doctorate in public policy from George Mason University focusing on economic and policy history, political economy and international trade. Dr. Magnus has recently focused on what economics can tell us about the modeling policy response to COVID and has taken particular interest in alternative policy strategies such as those taken by Sweden. He's a published author and was an adjunct professor of international commerce and policy at George Mason University from 2010 to 2017. Welcome, Dr. Magnus.
Thank you for having me, and I'm joining you from uh Great Barrington, Massachusetts, in the very western end of the state. Uh, we are uh in, in many ways kind of like Placer County in the, in the sense that we are a rural, uh mostly tourism-driven uh economy that is also governed by a state government in a large urban center, Boston on the other, other end of the state. And uh, we have been operating under a very similar type of circumstances of, of conferring with our state government over how to uh address uh the coronavirus crisis in a county that uh has unusual circumstances compared to what we'd find in an urban center. I do want to talk today a bit about the economics of lockdowns. So I'm coming at this from a, a slightly different perspective than our other panelists who uh have backgrounds in, in medicine and the treatment of diseases and uh, and various aspects of epidemiology. Uh, so I'm approaching it as an economist, and an economist that focuses specifically on how policy interventions operate, how they work and what some of the trade-offs happen to be. I want to preface this by noting that uh lockdowns are very difficult to interpret as economic policy, because they're subject to something that economists deal with in most areas of our profession, most areas of our life, when uh government action is initiated. Uh, how do you separate cause and effect? How do you identify whether something is actually the cause of a, a new pattern or trend, or if it is actually responding to other things that are unaccounted for? And one of the great complexities here, and we've seen this on full display with the coronavirus uh response, is that uh policy interventions do not occur in a vacuum. They do not take place separate and apart from uh what society is doing, which makes them very hard to model. Another way to put this is that uh human beings alter their behavior, and they alter their behavior almost instantaneously based on expectations of what they see about the foreseeable future, what they see about the policy responses in the foreseeable future. Uh, just to use a, a classic example, most of us started carrying hand sanitizer, some of them started wearing masks, uh changing the way that we interacted with public, probably as early as uh mid to late February, when we started to hear uh early word of this virus. And that certainly intensified as uh it moved to the United States and broke out into a, a severe public health crisis. What we see from uh behavioral responses though, is that they make uh predicting the effects of policy interventions very difficult. Even in the early days of the coronavirus, we know that lockdowns were imposed in 43 of 50 states to varying degrees, but they also vary quite a bit um internally from what a lockdown uh offers and what it does. And we see this both in the United States and internationally. Uh, for example, uh, some of the policy variations that we've encountered uh is definitions of what counts as an essential business versus a non-essential business. I think this varies almost uh every state that imposed a lockdown. Uh, more pronounced as we've moved further through the crisis is the stringent stringency with which a lockdown is enforced, or a shelter-in-place order is imposed. Uh, and then also the length, the duration. We had states in, in the US that reopened as early as the last week in April. Uh, we have some states that are still under a, a semi-permanent uh lockdown status that seems to be ke- uh extending in various degrees. We had some states that delayed their reopening into uh, uh the end of May, uh middle of June. And this has also shown up in quite a bit of the data. Uh, what this does is it complicates our ability to predict the course of a pandemic in relation to the policy responses. Uh, I'll preface this by noting, uh, I believe several of our other panelists have already indicated that we were operating in a, a, a data deficit back in March, when many of these policies were devised. And one of the ways that we coped with the, the lack of clear data about this novel disease as it's emerging was to rely very, very heavily on modeling. And uh several models were offered and emerged. The Imperial College one out of London seems to have been the major driver in the United States nationally to shift toward a shelter-in-place lockdown strategy. Although we also see from uh data that has been accumulated over the months since then, that uh the predictive claims of several of these models have not held up all that well. Uh, I think Dr. Yanita's uh mentioned the example, if you took two of the Imperial College models and cross-referenced them, applied them to the United States versus Europe as a whole, you ended up with very different results and even some evidence that lockdowns may have had a, a negligible or nonexistent effect. Uh, we also see clear evidence that uh the Imperial College model, its parameters, when they are adapted and basically applied and run for Sweden, uh yield very different results than what they predicted for a country that took Sweden's lighter-touch approach of not locking down, relying on social distancing advice and some lighter-touch measures. Uh, so the models themselves are probably operating in a place where we can start to question, at least if that should be the priority that we're making, uh basing policy upon. Uh, we also have some modeled reopening uh scenarios that were put forth by Imperial College. Uh, on March 24th was when they published their main paper on that. Uh, they put out a predictive model for five US states uh to ask the question, what would happen if they reopen from their state of lockdown? One of those happened to be California. They also focused on hotspots like New York, Massachusetts, that uh were undergoing very heavy coronavirus out- uh outbreaks at the time. But one of the things that we learned from, from that particular reopening model, it assumed an increase of mobility of 20% and then another scenario of 40% from a baseline of, of uh the bottom of the closure, of the uh, the full enactment of the closure over the next several months. And the reopening scenarios that they projected vastly overstated the number of deaths that uh could be expected by right about now on the timeline, by mid-July to early August. Even to the extent that the California model for showing a 20% um increase in mobility or a 40% increase of mobility had a, a range of predicted 1,000 to 5,000 daily deaths statewide. Uh, we know that's not the case. Death is still very much a problem with the coronavirus, but we know as of August 6th, I believe the uh seven-day moving average for California was 142 deaths. So they're off by orders of magnitude in the projections. But what does this tell us about the economic effects of the lockdowns? Uh, because we, we, we now have a better grasp, even though we're operating under extreme uncertainty, we have a better grasp of how they have operated economically, and we have a better idea of what uh the disease is doing and how it is regionally transmitting across the country. Uh, we can look at some of the results uh of both societies that locked down and societies that did not. Uh, they, they basically offer us a bit of a natural experiment type of a scenario. I have discussed quite a bit in my own work, uh, the, uh, the example, the case example of Sweden. And I want to preface this by noting that Sweden is uh, i- is one of a very small number of countries that very consciously and explicitly took a non-lockdown approach early on in the pandemic. They did so uh to much uh consternation at the time, although their policy has, has yielded some very interesting results. I would not call it a complete success in the sense that they experienced uh a very similar outbreak, acute outbreak scenario in nursing homes. Yet on the other hand, uh, they do have uh, uh very clear evidence that their curve has, has moved in the direction that uh, that, that most other societies in Europe have, and as of yet, uh no evidence of a rebound. Uh, but they've done so in ways that interact economically, uh that has put them on a better footing on some metrics than uh the remainder of Europe. So uh, just to give you an idea, we have uh second quarter GDP data that just came out at the very beginning of August for both uh the United States and most of the European uh economies. We know uh from the numbers that the United States posted a, an almost record 9.5% quarterly contraction in its gross domestic product. This is catastrophic in terms of historical perspectives, annualized. It uh would extend to a rate of 32.9% uh for uh the American economy. If this is extended over a year and the same rate continues. But 9.5% in a quarter is Great Depression-level uh types of economic contraction, although the causes that we see are very different. Uh, to give you a little bit of, of, of point of comparison, 9.5% contraction in the United States compares to a 12.1% decline that came out of the Eurozone. Hard-hit countries in Europe, some of those that experienced the pandemic early on and went into heavy lockdown, uh post much, much higher numbers. So Spain had an 18.5% contraction, France had a 13.8% contraction, and the UK was just posted horrendous numbers, uh in part because it's still under uh lockdown, still has not fully tamed uh the epidemic, uh 24, uh 20.4% contraction. We also know from lighter-hit countries, Germany had a 10.1% contraction, Austria a 12.8% contraction, uh although both of those countries went into various degrees of lockdown. Sweden is actually something of an exception. They had a softer contraction than most of the Eurozone with a few caveats. Uh, they had an 8.6 decline in GDP in quarter two, and this was actually being the only country in Europe that posted a slightly positive uh, uh level of economic growth, growth in quarter one. That's what included March, so the very tail end of quarter one, we were already in pandemic territory. Uh, by comparison to its neighbors, we have data now for Norway, which has basically matched Sweden 8.5%. Uh, then just across uh, um, across the sea, Netherlands also posted an 8.5% contraction. But the caveat here is while both Norway and the Netherlands went into a, a much heavier lockdown scenario, they adopted policies more in par with the rest of Europe. In March and April, both of them reopened very early on. And in fact, if you, if you measure their stringency of, of restrictions right now, uh Oxford University has a stringency index of responses to the coronavirus. Uh, Norway, the Netherlands and Sweden are at almost exact parity right now and have been since about late April uh to mid-May, uh depending on the country. So what we are seeing is, at least in uh observational comparison, countries that either did not adopt full lockdowns like Sweden, or that adopted them and reopened earlier, tend to be doing better than their neighbors, than their counterparts, or than the US, which has gone through a mixture of policies. Uh, another dimension of this that I'd like to draw attention to, and I provided a handout, I believe, that's been circulated in paper. Uh, and this is some work done from my, my colleague at the American Institute for Economic Research, also a professor of economics in Kansas, Abigail Deveraux, who has studied unemployment claims data from uh state-level releases that have, have come out basically monthly since the, the start of the coronavirus pandemic. And what this data shows us is if we index state-level insured unemployment claims, so people filing for unemployment to March 1, so about two weeks before the, the pandemic really starts to initiate uh policy responses in the US, we can actually track uh the performance of states on a comparative basis to see how they operate, to see how they've weathered um in terms of their employment markets. Uh, and early on, several studies were done on this, and they noticed that in the first few weeks, uh to really about the first month of the pandemic, most states paralleled each other uh very closely. And this is 43 out of 50 states that locked down. Uh, so by the end of March, early April, almost all of the United States is under some sort of lockdown or shelter-in-place order of varying degrees. And those states that did not are mostly rural states in the, uh, in the West that uh have more diffuse populations or were not hit early, uh not hit very hard by the, the pandemic early on. Uh, but nonetheless, it's quite a bit of data that's come in. What we start to see though, is toward the end of April, beginning of May, is states diverge in very pronounced ways in how they are weathering the unemployment crisis. Uh, and this, uh, this appears in really kind of groupings or clusters of states uh that we can divide, and that's what the chart in particular does. Uh, of these seven states that did not lock down, they're an interesting counterfactual, so we do include them in our data. Uh, they show the lowest increase in unemployment claims over the course of the pandemic. And this may be kind of obvious, they, they did not lock down, they did not uh put themselves under a, a situation where uh commerce is, is effectively suspended. Uh, so you'd expect that unemployment to be much lower there. But in those states, you had about a five uh percentage point increase in unemployment claims across the board on average since March 1st, since right just prior to the pandemic. Uh, what you start to see though, is the various levels of length and stringency that are applied in different states. So the next grouping of states are those that reopened after one month. Uh, we measured these as a metric of less than 30 days under lockdown. And what you see is a higher uh spike in unemployment claims, but it's about five percentage points added on to the non-lockdown states for uh being shut for a month or less. And then it starts to scale up from there. So every 10 days that's added onto the mark, you start getting uh, um, higher and higher levels of unemployment claims that persist to the present day. Uh, a good rule of thumb for, for states to measure this is for uh, uh late reopening states or states that are still under indefinite lockdown, you can add about three to five percentage points above states that reopened uh early. So there's a clear uh, at least association that's, that, that seems to be emerging, at least a correlation that's emerging between the length and duration and stringent, stringency of the lockdowns and the unemployment crisis that's emerging there. California is in one of the uh categories that uh we classify as an indefinite lockdown state, although there has been some level of reopening uh in areas that's been paused or reversed. But uh, it falls under the category of states that have not announced at least an official end date or suspension date to the declaration of emergency. And the most recent data from California illustrates that the state is hovering around a 14 to 15% increase in uh state-level insured unemployment claims since March 1st. It's one of the highest in the nations, and it's persisted as one of the highest in the nations as a result of that. Another point of comparison would be that California is hovering at 10 percentage points higher than a non-lockdown state, and about five to six percentage points higher than states that have generally reopened in the period between late April and the end of June. Uh, so what does this imply about uh economic conditions? Well, we can now state, I think with a, with a fair degree of uh conclusivity, that um, the variation in policy that's been applied across different economies in the United States, including the rate of reopening, uh the degree of stringency that a lockdown has been applied, uh has clear determinative economic effects on the response to the pandemic. And those have to be weighed in the trade-offs. They aren't the only consideration, but they are a substantial consideration, because human beings' well-being is often tied to their ability to attain an income, to work a job, uh to support themselves, to make rent payments, uh to uh cover their mortgage and their debts, even to, um, to have groceries and food in a given uh week. This is all going to depend upon the ability to attain our income. So what does that imply about uh policy moving forward now that we know that, that there's a substantial variation? We can actually look into mobility data, we can look into data that indicates how different states or different countries are comparing as the lockdown has persisted or ha- as it has been alleviated in some areas of the world and some areas of the country. And what we know from mobility data, this is stuff that's taken from uh Google and Apple phones. Uh, what they have both done is they've released metrics of the number of people appearing in retail and recreation locations, uh often down to very fine-grained on the state or in some cases even county level. I did map out California to see where it stood. And California almost perfectly tr- uh tracks two of the worst-hit states in the United States. And California almost perfectly tracks two of the worst-hit states in the United States, New York and New Jersey, in the early months of the pandemic. Mobility in California declined very rapidly even before the lockdown was put in place on March 19th. So about a week before that, you start to see a very rapid decline in number of people that are going to retail and recreation locations. It matches New York and New Jersey at its peak. California was in the territory of a 60% to 70% decline in mobility from the normal baseline in a previous year. So that's, makes it one of the highest declines in mobility in the nation. This lasted for about the end of March through early April, the peak of the pandemic on the East Coast, the peak of the first wave, so to speak. But we also saw clear evidence of it starting to relax toward the end of April through about mid-June. This also coincides again with the emergence of a second wave, other outbreaks that have occurred. But it also coincides in a different way with the pausing of the reopening in several of these states, even to the point that mobility in California today has now persisted at a much lower plateau, we're about 30% below the baseline, even as some other states have continued to reopen, including New York and New Jersey, the two that it closes, that are tracks the most closely. So what we are starting to see emerge in the wake of differences in lockdown policies over the last two to three months, as some states have reopened and others have not, is you see variation in their economic activity that was not there early on in the first few weeks to month or so of the pandemic. What this tells me from a policy analyst, as an economist who's studying this issue, is that we need to start reorienting some of our responses to a study of empirics, of metrics that are coming in to move away from the path dependency that we had on the early models, including models that have either failed or not proven sufficient to explain what is going on, or not proven capable to address quite a bit of the variation that we've started to see. We also know very clearly that lockdowns do carry a severe trade-off with economic health, with economic ability, not just in GDP, but also in the ability to earn an income, the ability to work a job. It doesn't mean that absent lockdowns, the economy would be fine and dandy. In fact, the coronavirus itself, because of the behavioral response, indicated with near certainty that the country was probably heading into recessionary territory, no matter what we did. What lockdowns and some of the more severe policies that we initially adopted back in March and April do is they add severity to the economic harm. And now that we see variation, now that we see some states opening up at faster paces than others, we can see the level of that severity playing out in real time. Another way to put it, this would be analogous to, if you consider something like a famous economic event of the Great Depression. Well, the stock market crashes in 1929 and subsequent events indicate we were heading into the Great Depression. But what most economists do when they analyze the Great Depression is they look at the policy responses in those first few years after the stock market crashes. And the United States made a lot of mistakes. It made mistakes in its monetary policy management, its international trade policy, we imposed a tariff on other countries as an attempt to protect the US economy. And what these policy steps did as they persisted is they made an economic downturn much, much worse. And the question is, what level of lockdown do we accept as a component of public health, especially if we have evidence that doesn't seem to really be holding up in terms of its effectiveness vis-à-vis clear evidence of its economic harms? In other words, we know that lockdown states are now at a point of suffering greater economic suppression than states that have started to reopen, but again, with trade-offs implicit in all of that. What this means in terms of recommendations that it offered to both my own state, if I were advising someone in Boston, or to other states, large, especially geographically diffuse states such as California, such as Texas, that have population centers and also rural and suburban areas, is that we need to look at the locale, we need to look at the conditions on the ground and ask questions. Can we vary, instead of the one-size-fits-all, top-down approach, can we vary at the local level and ask, are there ways to mitigate some of the economic damages that we know to come from these policies? Ask if there are ways to alleviate and put us onto a path of economic recovery as part of that trade-off, remaining conscious of public health.
Dr. Magnus?
Yep.
We do have somebody we'll have to get, one of our panelists has to leave at 11.
I can actually wrap up right there.
Okay, that'd be great.
And we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We really appreciate your input and your expertise. Very helpful. Thank you. I think we need to move, Shanti, I think we have somebody who needs to get off the phone. I know we're running a little bit late, so I think we're going to move to Dr. Weiss.
Yep.
And sorry about that, to our other docs. Dr. Weiss has to get off at 11:00, and I apologize for running a little bit late. So we'll take Dr. Weiss briefly. That would be great.
Thank you, Dr. Magnus. Harry Weiss is the president and CEO of Tahoe Truckee Hospitals. He was appointed as the Tahoe Forest Health System in December 2015. Weiss has been in healthcare leadership since 1977 with extensive strategy, acquisition, operational, clinical, and financial experience across for-profit and not-for-profit healthcare organizations and systems. He is a champion of innovation and passionate about delivering a new model of healthcare that's integrated, high-quality, compassionate, and proactive. Weiss holds a Master's in Healthcare Administration from University of Laverne and a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration Accounting from Southwestern Adventist University. Welcome, Mr. Weiss.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Just to share with you very briefly, it's a privilege to share, and I've certainly admired some of the earlier speakers and their documented work over the past five-and-a-half months especially. The Tahoe Forest Health System area and the Lake Tahoe area is one of the most desired destination spots in America, as many of you know. So we, as a rural area, have experienced a wide variety of change since March, where we had a large influx of people come visit us in March. We started having a lot of positive lab tests and ill patients in late March and early April. We saw that really flat line and really began to decline, especially in the months of really June, July, and August, even more pronounced in the month of August, even though we were a very warm spot early on in being a destination spot. So far, for example, in August, we've ranged 0 to 3 inpatients, and we were 0 to 7 in the previous month with, you know, many days of no patients. Where we are seeing increases, which I think is especially noteworthy, is we look at healthcare from a holistic perspective here, as we're really accountable for all diseases and injuries. And what we're seeing specifically in our region is that mental health referrals to our health or mental health providers have risen more than 200% in the last five months as the various stresses have continued to decline. We're also hearing from our local food bank that their referrals have grown at over 600%. We, as a health system, have stated this for a few months now, and I don't hear it that much in the news, but I think it's a very important disease cluster, and that's the diseases of food, housing, and job insecurity, which we're seeing more of that as a holistic healthcare provider in our region. Also, the diseases from prolonged shelter-in-place. For example, on June 9, Becker's Hospital Review had a commentary from Mayo Clinic CEO and Cleveland Clinic CEO, and they talked about the higher acuity of ER patients that are being seen. And we're seeing that as well. And also the fact that just in the disease category of cancer, because of a lack of attention for four, you know, six weeks to two months and beyond, there could easily be 250,000 additional deaths per year just in that one cluster category of cancer. As I've spoken with our radiologists, they're saying, you know, that they're seeing more advanced tumors and so forth amongst the patient population that we see as well. When I've talked to individuals in our community, you know, who have suggested that we should have a total shutdown, you know, I've shared that in this region, we've only had one death of an individual who was a hospice patient, and every life is super precious, who also was COVID. So we've had one death, we've had 153 admissions. And I've shared that there will be many deaths in our region each year, but again, not from COVID-19. So I think it's a perspective of all these other matters, which should make COVID certainly look like the 1% to 3% issue. And the question is, what are we doing about the other, you know, 97% to 99% issue is our concern, you know, for the total health in America? So as we're dealing with it, certainly our lab capabilities have really increased, the turnaround in those issues have really helped. Our medical teams are doing an amazing job of caring for patients in med-served or intensive care units. And again, no deaths in our hospital to date in this, which I think is remarkable. And we're seeing remarkable improvements in other health systems as well as they're really finding new ways to successfully treat. And so our theme really is just living successfully in the era of COVID-19. You've heard about those vulnerable populations. We do speak about that as well. We need to protect that. And I think that really gets to that public health immunity that's been shared earlier as well. But we're happy to be seeing a slowdown overall in the cases and certainly hospitalization. And we hope that continues in August and September. We haven't seen any science evidence that says this disease needs to repeat every year. And so we're hopeful that through a variety of mechanisms, you know, we can beat and cause this disease to continue to lose energy over the coming months. So that's my summary.
Thank you very much, Dr. Weiss. Really appreciate that report and good to hear that the hospitalizations in your area have decreased. That's good to hear. All right, we will move on to, I don't see any questions. Okay, we'll move on to our next panelist.
Okay, next up is Dr. Genevieve Sweet, MD, who is a urologist and a specialist in Roseville. She attended and graduated from Boston University School of Medicine in 2006, having over 14 years of diverse experience, especially in urology. Welcome, Dr. Sweet.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So yeah, you know, we've heard some amazing speakers today, and you know, I'm honored and humbled to be here. And I think in listening to all of this, you know, I'm thinking the reason I was asked to speak was to offer a little bit of a local perspective, but perhaps a broad one. You know, as my introduction alluded to, I've worked in primary care, urgent care, military medicine, and worked in public health. Currently, I'm a surgeon locally working in our own county. So I also think, you know, what I'd like to say, hopefully as timely as we are, fortunately coming off the watch list, which is, you know, wonderful news. And I think, you know, we've talked so much about the data leading up to this point, and but I want to talk a little bit maybe about potential solutions or interventions or what we can do from here, because I'm sure, you know, our board is looking to kind of make those decisions and next steps. You know, certainly, we can't stay closed forever, but you know, COVID's not going away. We have to learn how to live with this virus and be smarter than it. And so I just want to focus quickly just on a few points. You know, first of all, you know, locally, what can we control? I'm a big believer in the precautions. I've been working with our local school board here for months, implementing safety measures for when we can get back in school, which I hope is very soon for our kids. But I'm a big believer in their effectiveness, and I think we really need to get that message out to, you know, Placer County. You know, I think there is a bit of a political divide, and you know, that shouldn't be the case in a pandemic. So, you know, first off, masking, it's important, we need to do it. I want to see us be successful off the watch list, and I think that's a really important intervention. You know, there's all kinds of arguments out there, you know, is N95 better than a surgical mask, better than a cloth mask, better than a bandana, better than a gator? But the reality is, they all offer at least some effectiveness. We know the disease is transmitted by droplets. The masks filter not all the droplets, but the larger and medium-sized ones. They reduce the jet stream on which the propulsion of the droplets are carried. So they do offer at least some effectiveness. Handwashing, obviously, we know that works. Here in the hospital, everywhere you turn, within about five to eight feet, there is a hand sanitizing station. And I think that's a realistic measure that we can help support our local businesses with, is getting those all over the place. You know, employees and waiters and, you know, supermarket attendants and all these different positions, they should be able to turn around and wash their hands in a matter of seconds. So I'd like to see kind of moving forward with a promotion of that. Along those same lines, you know, just anecdotally, when I go out, sometimes I see what's really lacking is the sanitization of communal surfaces. Spacing seems like it's actually been pretty good, and I think our restaurants and businesses are actually doing a very good job with that for the most part. But I don't always see the door handles and, you know, the bathrooms and things getting wiped down, and that's, you know, a huge source of inoculation. And so I think education and kind of promoting that shift would also be, you know, something our board can kind of educate going forward. At restaurants, I'd like to see gloves kind of go away. I think that when there's gloves on, people stop washing their hands, and we're just transmitting and moving things around. I'd rather see more handwashing than glove-wearing. Moving things outdoors as much as we can, it's hard with the heat wave, but hopefully that'll settle down in a week or so. But, you know, as much as we can get things outdoors, that's been shown to be effective. There are very low rates of transmission when outdoors. I also want to talk about, you know, our high-risk populations. So move on to my second point, you know, where's the money at? Where's the biggest places we can kind of intervene to keep things controlled locally? And I think, I think there's three. Every blip and uptick we've had in our numbers, everyone's been associated with either a skilled nursing facility outbreak or a large gathering. So I think these are areas that need to be watched very closely. Perhaps some more support and education with our skilled nursing facilities. And then limiting the large gatherings, I think for now, is still a very important point. I also, as some of our other speakers did touch on, you know, especially as we move forward and we all can't stay in lockdown, you know, I think shifting from keeping the population contained to really helping our most high-risk groups stay safe is a really important measure. You know, going back a few months ago, I loved it when the grocery stores were offering, you know, hours just for seniors. And, you know, there's still these grocery delivery services and, you know, things like that. And I think just promoting, you know, being neighborly and helping your elderly citizens at the hospitals, you know, fortunately, we've been supported in revenue to do video visits, so these patients don't need to come in. But I think other ways that we can kind of keep, you know, our 65-plus and, you know, immunosuppressed people safe, you know, if they're not getting it, the death rates will go down because they're the ones dying from it. And I think that's really going to help add clarity to our decision-making going forward. And then, you know, my final note as far as what we can control, you know, individually, we also have to try and control what factors of our own health. You know, I would love to see people use this as an opportunity to get in shape and stop smoking and, you know, making themselves at lower risk for complication. And a big one from a public health standpoint also is making sure you are seeing your physician. You know, we're offering video visits, we're keeping the clinics as safe as possible. Don't delay coming in, don't push your treatment off to where your treatment's going to be 10 times more complicated. You know, get your diabetes checked, get your hypertension in order, and stay up to date with your vaccine. The last thing we need right now is, you know, a measles outbreak or, you know, a, you know, the colleges filled with meningococcus or, you know, whatever, the elderly patients all getting pneumonia, when some of these things are preventable. So I think that's where we should direct our efforts going forward with the reopening. And then my final point is, as the disease goes up, we need to get smarter than the disease. And with all the data we heard, I think we're catching up. But, you know, I think along those lines, an important thing for us is, you know, how do we define it going forward? How do we define, you know, worsening situation? How do we define, you know, our achievements? And I was really glad to hear from Dr. Sisson today that we are re-looking at some of our watchlist criteria. I think it's really important that we're our watch list criteria. I think it's really important that we're looking at, you know, among our COVID deaths, you know, how many of them are purely from COVID. In the beginning, that wasn't being teased out. I also think our capacity numbers, unfortunately, up until maybe very recently, haven't been very useful. You know, ICU capacity is very relative. Most hospitals could fill their ICUs if they wanted, if we did enough electric, elective surgery. So I think using the surge capacity or maybe defining a new term like COVID capacity, you know, what could we really ramp up to? Those are the numbers that we really need to know about, because obviously, we need to have our capacity there if we do see or sending numbers. But the numbers for those right now are somewhat arbitrary, and I do think need revision. And, you know, reaching out to our state, you know, public health level, I think, to look at how these numbers are being defined is going to be really important, because we're only as good as the data that we can collect. So that's my perspective. I'm happy if there is any questions, to answer them now.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sweet. Don't see any questions. I really do appreciate you taking some time speaking with me this last weekend as well. And always love hearing a doctor encourage us to take care of our health, which is important for everyone. So thank you so much for your time, and we will move to our next speaker, please.
Okay, up next is Dr. Ranjani Kalyan. She is an infectious disease specialist in Roseville and is affiliated with multiple hospitals in the area. Her specialties include infectious disease, internal medicine. For Dr. Kalyan, the most exciting part of the specialty is to be able to concisely explain an infectious disease condition to a patient with a unifying diagnosis by incorporating multiple specialties and subspecialties in the process. After Dr. Kalyan's infectious disease fellowship at Loyola University in Chicago, Illinois, she had the privilege of working with two of the most respected local groups in Chicago, and was later given this opportunity to join pulmonary medicine, infectious disease, and critical care consultants, where she was given a chance to further expand the infectious diseases section of the group. Working in PMA has allowed her to collaborate with some of the most critically-thinking, compassionate, and skilled physicians. Welcome, Dr. Kalyan.
I cannot yet hear you.
Thank you very much for having me today. It's truly an honor to represent infectious disease and really our viewpoint locally at this level. And it was a pleasure to speak with Bonnie Gore. So, you know, there are some stalwarts of infectious disease and epidemiology, epidemiologists who spoke earlier today. And I wanted to give a little bit of a community perspective as an infectious disease physician in Placer County, as well as a mom. You know, I've been practicing infectious diseases for about 14 years now, a mom for 13 years. And I certainly recognize that my 13-year-old and 10-year-old over the past five to six months now have certainly felt removed from society with their lack of friends, decreasing self-confidence, self-esteem sometimes because of not being able to regularly communicate with their friends as they are accustomed to. Certainly, the last few months of school year took a hit, although our school board and our district did a phenomenal job in trying to regroup in such a short period of time. And in this distant learning situation, they've made incredible strides in really offering excellent education for these kids in the earlier grades. So while education is still something that, you know, we expect to see the teacher and our friends in learning, you know, there are, of course, these extracurricular activities that these children are involved in, that they're not, no longer able to as easily as they were in the past. So we clearly see that children are affected socially, emotionally, behaviorally perhaps with some children. And of course, earlier, it was discussed, the economy that's being, that was hit. And so in various ways, in children, adults, the community has been affected, as we know. So we're trying various measures to get past this hopeful blip. And I am optimistic that we'll get through this in order to evaluate how this virus and disease treats us and how we can manage it going forward over the several months. Now, I just want to step back a little bit, because I want to take a viewpoint as an infectious disease physician, and not as a mom, because I very frequently have to go between the two to assess the risk and benefit of exposing the community to this infection and what I do see in the community. I'm really thankful for Dr. Sisson's evaluation, and it looks like we're coming off the watch list, which is wonderful. I do want, coming off the watch list is one thing, but I also think we need to keep ourselves on the watch list in the community, at the hospital. At multiple levels, we need to continually see how this virus behaves and what measures we may need to take at the local level in order to mitigate the effects of the virus. I think Dr. Parsonette from Stanford said it, really, I have to underscore what she said, in that in a pandemic situation, it's, I have been trained to follow just what, you know, we, we're sort of, are, we are in a war against this virus. And in this situation, we just, you know, I, as an infectious disease physician, am a soldier at the hospital in fighting this virus and would take the orders, so to speak, from the county as well as the state. And I really think that universal message that comes down from the state is really important in a pandemic situation, because there are several unknowns. The, when we initially started off on this journey, there were so many unknowns that really, we came to a really tight lockdown. That lockdown allowed for us to have some plateau in our numbers, certainly. However, with each holiday, we noticed increasing gatherings, family gatherings, or people traveling to see their, their family members graduate. So there was a lot of travel up and down the state that would end up in hospitalizations. To where we are now, at our hospital, we're seeing probably the highest number of hospitalizations. And where we used to see 65-plus hospitalized, we're now seeing the 20s, 30s, and 40s, 40-year-olds that are getting admitted, where they probably may not have otherwise gotten admitted if it was flu or an asymptomatic or a minimally or mild infection that they may otherwise have had. Here, these young people are getting admitted with certainly, some have comorbidities and others don't. So I think there are still some risk factors, as someone had mentioned earlier, that we may need to continue to look at, as to why some are presenting in a more severe situation as opposed to others who might be asymptomatic or mildly ill. I'm sort of, it's staggering to see that the young people requiring increasing oxygen needs, where after several days of, you know, being evaluated and monitored, they'll suddenly require a jump in oxygenation and require some high-flow oxygen that then takes them to the ICU setting and then bring them back to the floors. Of course, as we see the data, the young people are not dying, but the increasing numbers of young folks coming in is surprising. And the duration of illness and the duration of hospitalization is quite surprising to me, as I see these patients regularly. While we do have treatment options, again, these are emergency use access, medications for certain, the convalescent plasma that's out there, we have to be on a trial. So it's not easy in trying to treat these patients. And what we're also seeing in the last month is that once these young folks do have that prolonged hospitalization I was talking about, they go out, and then they're starting to come back a week or two later with either COVID-associated inflammatory changes, or their underlying disease may flare up as a result of the recent infection. So there are still a lot of things about COVID that we're recognizing that's new to us. And so when, when I start to see these repeat hospitalizations in these young people, that's a bit concerning to me. You know, certainly, when I, when I interview some of these patients, they sheepishly look at me and, and explain that, yes, I was traveling here to, you know, another hotspot in California. Or they did, some have even, you know, openly stated that they've been exposed to people who were positive in their family gatherings. So, you know, many of them would say that this infection could not happen to them. They are otherwise well and young, so they felt well enough to participate in many of these gatherings. And, you know, to me, what affects me most is that I see that these are the people who are most productive to our community, to our county, where they should be working, where the businesses require them. They're being removed from that environment and into a hospital environment where they may not have otherwise been. So it's really the productive years, as I think Dr. Parsonette had mentioned, is being taken away during this time of illness. So whether it's the businesses that, that employ these folks that are coming in, or whether these are healthcare workers that are getting ill as a result, it's, it's, it's really quite a bit of patients that we are seeing. The other piece of this, you know, the young people getting affected that's concerning is that, of course, when they're, they live with multi-generational families, you have the immunocompromised and the elderly, who of course, the, the younger ones go home and expose the immunocompromised and the elderly that are more susceptible to not only getting sick and ultimately dying. That, that really increases the risk that I, I worry about, especially going into this flu season. There's a lot of unknown uncertainty with, with the flu and COVID. Flu in itself, as someone had mentioned, is to be taken seriously, and several people die of the flu. And now with what we may anticipate in the, going towards the fall, I would be cautious in how I would, you know, start opening up. While we are seeing promising numbers, I would like to see a steady decline in numbers for a period of time before we readily open up. I think that's really my greatest concern and question, is that as we really should be listening to the state and national public health departments, and certainly our county public health officer, we really also need to be looking at resources for those areas that are being hit by not opening up, which we talked about earlier and others have mentioned. The psychological, the social, the, the domestic violence that might be increasingly seen during this lockdown or during these, these, these times. I think that's really what I'd like to see the resources being attributed to. And what do we do as we do open up cautiously in terms of testing? And I'm glad to see that Stanford is partnering with multiple places, multiple hospitals throughout the state, whether it's the schools or various businesses. How are we testing the teachers or the students when they do present with symptoms coming fall, either with, not every cough or a sniffle or congestion is COVID, yet that is the foremost concern that everyone would have. So what measures and infrastructure are we going to put in place in order to address the testing situation? So all in all, I think I just want to leave more time for questions, if anyone had any. What we do see is very significant in terms of the illness that these younger people are now presenting with, who then place the elderly and the immunocompromised at greater risk. And the, the second point is, I really think we need to have a uniform and standardized message, so to speak, in order for the community to stay safe and to return in a, in a, in a steady, steady approach. So that's all I have. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kalyan. I do believe Supervisor Yuler has a question. He's on Zoom, so let's bring in Supervisor Yuler to ask his question.
Yes, quickly, thank you. You've referenced younger people as a category. Do you have an approximate age range you're talking about?
The 18 to 49 is really where we're seeing the increasing numbers that are being hospitalized.
Okay, so you're not talking about the typical student ages?
Right, right. The younger folks, our hospital, actually, we don't admit them here. They're usually transferred out. But the ones I'm specifically talking about are the 18 to 49 age group.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking some time, Dr. Kalyan. Really appreciate it. Thanks for taking care of those patients in the hospital as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's see, we have our next panelist, please.
All right, this is our final panelist, Dr. Melanie Trobridge. Dr. Trobridge is a psychiatrist in Roseville. She has been in practice for more than 20 years. A significant portion of whom Melanie is can be credited to her undergraduate Christian education, where there existed an intentionality and discipleship of the mind taught by educators who had first learned this themselves and were passing it on to the next generation. This undergraduate foundation was the scaffolding for her further postgraduate education and career advancement. With a background first in general medicine and subsequently in various areas of psychiatry, she understands that bio-psychosocial-spiritual-integrated persons is her passion. Dr. Trobridge received her M.D. from Medical College of Ohio and her B.A. Biology from Mount Vernon Nazarene University, and is a California Medical Board Licensed Physician Psychiatrist. In addition, she is a child and adolescent psychiatrist with UC Davis Fellowship and adult psychiatrist with UC Irvine and the UC Davis Residency. Welcome, Dr. Trobridge.
We need to have you unmute, Dr. Trobridge.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, appreciate the opportunity to share with you this morning. Thank you so very much. I'd like to speak with you regarding aspects of the novel coronavirus from a vantage point of, clinical vantage point of working in Placer County as a private psychiatrist, as well as a university professor. So I'd like to offer some points of consideration where these two particular roles intersect with COVID-19. I'm joining you here from Arizona, actually, because the third hat that I'm currently wearing has to do with transporting our daughter to Arizona into her first year of vet medicine under this veil of COVID. So I am especially keen and aware of our college and graduate population right now and how they're weathering this particular issue. The college population is in the limelight for obvious reasons. And because of well-documented data and certainly academically noteworthy meetings that we're having around college students, we have some visibility to the effects of COVID-19. This visibility may be extrapolated to the broader population, I believe, because it represents a mini proportion of our citizenry and our business community. A 2018 National Health College Assessment published by the American College of Health Associations found that one in four of our college students had some form of diagnosable mental health illness. And 44% had had symptoms of depression within that last year. Further vital findings of that particular assessment that predates our novel coronavirus environment were that 86% of our college students felt overwhelmed, 68% felt sad, 63% very lonely, 62% experienced overwhelming anxiety. lonely, 62% experienced overwhelming anxiety. And of significant and particular concern to me was that 53% acknowledged feelings of hopelessness, which many of us in the mental health provider arena find concerning because hopelessness and lack of hope is very equivalent to concerning areas and severity of suicide. And then 41% depressed to the point where functioning was difficult. Finally, suicide continued and continues to be a leading cause of death in college students. Right now, it ranks number two. All right, let's fast forward just a bit to current times. In late spring, a survey of our college students published by Active Minds specific to COVID-19 reported this. 91% of our students reported anxiety or stress, 81% bad or disappointed, 80% very lonely or isolated, and 56% had relocated, with 48% reporting financial setbacks. Similar surveys reported in late July in Inside Higher Ed also gave voice to concerningly higher rates of depression and other mental health concerns in our college students. All right, so these complexities that we are in our county grappling with are also the topic of robust discussion in a late-July meeting of the American Academy of Clinical Psychiatrists and Current Psychiatrists. It's well-studied that college students are especially prone to feelings of loneliness, and they experience higher rates of anxiety and depression compared to the general population. We know that. But during the period of social isolation, uncertainty, and abrupt transitions, they're prone to even further worsening of those signs and symptoms. So expert analyses from that meeting detailed that anxiety has seemingly become a feature of modern life and that in our culture, which has taken a prominent emotional tone of fear, tends to promote cognitive distortions in which everyone is perceiving danger at every turn. Certainly, this increase in anxiety that predated the pandemic appears to be contributing to further mental health concerns in our now college, university, and graduate group. While we must be vigilant in appropriate hygiene, certainly, and staying safe through social distancing during this pandemic, the group of expert analyses stated that we don't want people to stop functioning, planning for the future, and really, as it pertains to college students' cases, studying and getting ready for their careers. The experts in this analysis reinforced the critical value of resiliency, which fleshed itself out in the following ways. Developing problem-solving and conflict-resolution skills. Developing coping mechanisms. Being able to regulate emotions. Finding optimism toward the future. Having access to mental health services. And having cultural or religious beliefs with a negative view of suicide. These are all protective factors that promote resiliency. Additional protective features include the development of socio-emotional readiness skills like being conscientious, having self-management, interpersonal skills, self-control, task persistence, risk management, self-acceptance, and having an open mindset or seeking help when needed. You know, family connection is kind of a mixed bag. Attachments and supportive relationships within the family predicts good outcomes. However, conflicted, stressful, and tumultuous family relationships and/or where their resources are not adequate may be a risk factor. So as a result of all these virtual expert analyses and other recent data, applications in the form of best practices and emerging trends were voiced for our college campus circa fall 2020. So quote, "Best practices and emerging trends include consideration of wellness and resiliency programs, reducing stigma, engagement from students, training of faculty and staff, crisis management plans, telehealth counseling, substance abuse programs, post-vention support after suicide, collaboration with mental health providers, and support for diverse populations." Specific to COVID-19, campuses should consider a focus on routine, self-care, physical activity, because we all know that the healthier we are below the neck, the healthier we are above the neck, right? And connections with other people while also giving space for grieving lost experiences, facing uncertainty, developing resilience, and finding meaning. In my private practice, which is new to Roseville, I've transitioned to that county, your county, our county, because I'm also a professor at one of our county's universities. My assessment of trends this summer of 2020 are not unlike what I previously described. Many patient signs and symptoms have been exacerbated by the bio-psychosocial and spiritual ramifications of COVID-19. And yes, I've seen a larger percentage of college students and emerging adults in my practice now than in the past, but what I see that cuts across really lifespan development stages is the need for really what I call a behavioral health facelift, if you will. That kind of focus that the CDC comments on about population health approach, where behavioral health is not just encompassing traditional mental health like patients in a traditional private practice, but addresses overall psychological well-being along that continuum. So my practice this summer has seen what I call a resilience rundown, due in part to the many ramifications of COVID. Some are experiencing an uptick in chronic mental health struggles, while others are experiencing acute mental health challenges for the very first time. But many others, and here numerous college students and medical providers fall here, are experiencing a drain that affects and infects their ability to adapt well. So in this last group and to that point, this resilience rundown is a newer focus of my concern in our county. And I and other healthcare provider peers are looking for more appropriately innovative ways to address this greater population more efficiently and effectively. And being mindful of the time, I'll finish there and take any questions you might have. I'm apologetic that the video didn't work, but hopefully I came across loud and clear.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, Dr. Trobridge, and really appreciate you especially taking time as you're in another state moving your child to college. So I wish you all the best with that. I don't, do we have any questions from colleagues? I don't think so. Really appreciate you just sharing with us sort of the mental aspect of how this is affecting our college students, but also the population at large. I had actually asked our public health team for some numbers and just interesting to note that calls to our local suicide hotline are up 13% over the same time last year, and we have a 40% increase in our mobile crisis call requests. So, you know, we've heard anecdotally that there's been increase in mental health, but just knowing that there are increased numbers of calls and people asking for help is very clear as a result of the isolation and people not having that social interaction or losing jobs or what have you. So really appreciate your time this afternoon or this morning.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we go ahead and do we have any questions for our other panelists while they're on? Just anything that came up as we're having these discussions before we open it up to the public. Supervisor Gusterson?
Thank you. I don't know that I have questions. I am just so impressed that people took this amount of time to help guide those of us in local public policy on such profound discussions. We certainly, as leaders sitting here, have to weigh a tremendous amount of information, and I've really valued this time. I definitely have some comments to make later, but I don't have any clarifying questions at this point. Thank you.
Great, thank you.